When you see them. That's Kathy.
Calling to order, the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting. Good evening. If you would all rise and we will recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luke.
Here.
Councilmember Luther.
Here.
Councilmember Norris.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Satel.
Here.
Councilmember Weshi.
Here.
Councilmember Hood.
Here.
And Councilmember Iwannu.
Here.
Okay, we have all eight councilmembers present. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Do you have a motion?
Motion for approval.
So, a second?
Motion made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to continue bill sixty-five thirteen to the November fifth council meeting.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Iwannu to continue bill number six-five-one-three to November the fifth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. All in favor of the amended agenda for this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. The agenda for this evening is approved. Next, we have public comments. I have one card here. Mr. Shane Monig, please come forward. State your name and address to the city clerk, if you would.
It's Shane Monig, M-O-N-N-I-G, eleven eight-eight-four Brookington Drive in the Harmon Estates subdivision. My wife's handing out some photos that'll go along with what I have to say. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name's Shane Monig and this is my wife Stacy. We live at eleven eight-eight-four Brookington Drive, directly next to the property in question. We're joined tonight by several of our neighbors from Brookington Drive who are here in support of addressing these ongoing concerns. In December this year, I was celebrated twenty-eight years as a public servant with the local St. Louis County municipality. My wife and I have been proud residents of Bridston for over twenty years in the Harmon Estates subdivision, and we've raised three children here, a community we have always considered safe, family-oriented, and well-maintained. We're regarding, we're here regarding eleven eight-nine-two Brookington Drive, a property that has become a persistent and growing problem for our street and our community. This yard has accumulated debris and trash, with indoor furniture stacked outside, tall uncapped grass, and makeshift wall of rocks and trash cans separating it from our home. The residence is harboring feral cats outside, creating sanitation issues and safety concerns for domestic pets, wildlife, and neighbors. This doesn't include the harassment and malicious targeting of our neighbors by this resident. There are also four spotlights aimed directly into our four of our five bedrooms of our home, creating significant light pollution and disrupting our family's peace and privacy. This has been going on for years, it's been reported. In addition, there's constant activity involving questionable individuals and vehicles, many unlicensed or mislicensed, coming and going at all hours, raising serious safety concerns. To be candid, the state of this property is more indicative of a neglected home in North St. Louis City, where ordinances often go unenforced. Ordinances often go unenforced. Then a resident here in Bridston, Missouri, allowing the situation to continue sends the message that this community, the one that my family and I have decided to live in for twenty years, I don't know how many of your officers or your family, family members here that work here in the city of Bridston, live in Bridston, but I do. Allowing this situation to continue sends the message that community standards and property maintenance are optional. They're not optional. That's what, that's why people live in municipalities. I want to note that I understand municipal government, I'm aware that the avenues could have been utilized to rectify these situations, yet nothing effective has been done. Simply adding these violations to the property's existing municipal cases, municipal cases is not solving the problem. That's clear. This has been going on for more than one decade. Because of this home and the city's continuance, continued tolerance of its condition, we and our neighbors face declining property value and real safety risks due to activity and instability it brings. We are not seeking fines or punishment. I, I, we don't care, okay? I don't care if this, this resident loses a dollar. I don't want them to lose money. I don't want them to sit in jail. I don't want them punished. We simply want a clean, peaceful, and presentable property that reflects the pride and standards of not only Bridston, but our neighborhood Harmon Estates. I brought photo handouts, I did, I only made nine copies, pardon me, but if you could pass them around, to show you that you and the city officials present tonight clearly the conditions we're describing. We respectfully urge the council to take this meaningful and decisive action to restore the safety, peace, and integrity to our neighborhood. We'll continue attending council meetings until action is taken because our community and our family deserves no less. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Monig. We have another card. Officer Stone's bringing it forward here. Thank you, sir. Luciera Bowers, please come forward, state your name and address to the city clerk.
My name is Luciana Bowens. My address is seven zero zero seven Roberts Court, St. Louis, Missouri, six-three-one-three-zero. I am here speaking for my daughter who lives at four-one-one-three Stoneheart Drive Apartment Number One, St. Anne, Missouri, six-three-zero-seven-four. She lives in the Cypress Village Apartments, and I'm here because she's, she's a single parent, and the apartment conditions there are uninhabitable. I'll read a letter that I wrote to the, the management. I'm writing formally to notify you that my apartment is currently uninhabitable due to several urgent maintenance issues. First, there has been a broken window in the dining room since September twenty-second, which I reported to emergency maintenance in accordance with paragraph twenty-six of my lease. As a mother of two young children, the inability to secure my home has posed significant safety concerns, ultimately preventing me from leaving my apartment to work on September twenty-third. To mitigate this, I had to arrange for Richard's board-up service to board up the window for safety and to help regulate the temperature inside my apartment. Despite my attempts to contact you via phone, text, and the tenant portal regarding this issue, I received no responses. When I finally spoke with someone in the office, I was notified that you were unavailable due to a Jewish holiday and that the maintenance personnel were struggling with the new system, which has severely impacted my situation. On October first, another critical issue arose when the water started leaking from the ceiling of my only bathroom. Once again, I attempted to contact emergency maintenance according to paragraph twenty-six of my lease, but received no response. The office was closed on October third due to another holiday, and the maintenance employee still had not learned how to operate the new system. Upon inspection, he identified that an overflowing toilet in the upstairs vacant apartment was the source of the flooding in mind. I was told that the water in the walls would dry up on its own. Unfortunately, the water continued to leak and has led to ongoing damage and a significant mildew smell, making it impossible for my family to sleep in our unit. Moreover, I'm concerned about my daughter's ongoing respiratory issues, which have progressively worsened due to the conditions inside the apartment. It appears that the air filters and the HVAC system have not changed, been changed regularly, and there is visible mold in the basement, which exacerbates our living situation. Given these circumstances, I'm requesting reimbursement for our rent and release from the lease. I have talked to management. I have talked to the inspectors with the city of Bridston on her behalf. She's a single parent working. We have pictures of the mold. We have pictures of the ceiling falling. You can touch the walls and see if they're wet, and they're not doing anything about it. I've talked to other tenants that live there, and they said that people are running extension cords to get power, power in the building. There are homeless people living in some of the buildings, and nothing's being done. So, because a lot of lower-income people live there, I wanted to bring that to your attention, and hopefully you guys can help the people there with the situation. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you hand your letter to Mr. Gunn over there, our public works director, so he can make a copy of it before you leave?
Yes.
And then I want to let you know that we have a, a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning with the property management company and also the property managers themselves. So, this is the third meeting that we're having within six weeks, so.
Okay.
I will bring that to their attention.
Okay.
And if some of these violations are being taken care of soon, we have to move forward with some other options.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Monig, after the council meeting, or early in the morning when we get here, we will discuss the situation at the address listed. Okay. I know we're all aware of the person, so thank you very much. I see no further comment cards, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the amendments from October first.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion is made for approval by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther of the October first minutes. Discussion. Your light came on. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend line fifty-seven. The motion was seconded by Councilmember Luther.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther to amend line fifty-seven. That Councilmember Luther should be in place of Councilmember Luke. Okay. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Councilmember Luther, you have a light on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to remove line one ninety-eight, that during my comments, I attended the Chick-fil-A ribbon cutting. I did not.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke to eliminate line one ninety-eight, attended Chick-fil-A ribbon cutting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Any further changes? I hear none. All in favor of the amended October first minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. The minutes for October first, two thousand twenty-five are approved. Next item on the agenda. We do have a couple of proclamations this evening. First, we have a proclamation regarding the hereditary spastic paraplegia and primary lateral sclerosis day, and I'm going to call Councilmember Hood to the podium out in front here to read the proclamation. Mrs. Schultz, would you like to come forward also?
You might have to help me with some of the big words. Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation recognizing October seventeenth as World HSP PLS Day, Hereditary Spastic Paraplegia and Primary Lateral Sclerosis. Whereas, hereditary spastic paraplegia, HSP, and primary lateral sclerosis are rare, progressive, and incurable neurological disorders that affect individual of all ages, causing significant disability, diminishing quality of life, and placing a profound burden on patients, families, and caregivers. And whereas, HSP and PLS are part of the broader rare disease community, which impacts more than three hundred million people worldwide, yet remain under-recognized, under-diagnosed, and under-funded for critical research. And whereas, individuals living with HSP and PLS experience lengthy diagnostic delays, often enduring years of progressing symptoms without access to effective medications or therapies, underscoring the urgent need for improved care pathways, earlier detection, and greater support. And whereas, October seventeenth has been designated as World HSP and PLS Day by the international patient and research community honoring Nobel Prize-winning scientist Santiago Ramon Cajal and Camelia Golgi, whose nineteen oh six discoveries laid the foundation for modern neurological research by identifying neurons as the basic units of the nerve, nervous system. And whereas, the observance of World HSP and PLS Day promotes global collaboration, advances scientific discovery, enhances access to clinical expertise, and strengthens patients' advocacy and support networks. And whereas, the United States as a global leader in medical research and innovation plays a vital role in advancing rare disease research, and its recognition of World HSP and PLS Day amplifies international efforts to accelerate the development of treatments and potential cur, cures. And whereas, organizations such as the Spastic Paraplegia Foundation, representing members in more than sixty-five countries, together with patient associations from at least fifteen nations, are uniting in advocacy, education, and collaboration to bring greater visibility to HSP and PLS on the world stage. Mayor, would you like to read the final paragraph?
Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Bridston hereby recognizes October seventeenth as World Hereditary Spastic Paraplegia, that's HSP, and Primary Lateral Sclerosis, PLS Day, and encourages all people to join the international community in raising awareness, supporting those affected, and advancing efforts towards effective treatments and cures past this eighteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-five. I want to present this to you, and we'd like to.
Here. I'll carry it back. Except it's the fifteenth.
I can turn it to Michael.
What is it, seventeen? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody on the council for doing this. This means a lot. And also, I want to say that the Spastic Paraplegia Foundation is having the annual conference in Washington, DC next week, and this proclamation will be on display. So, that's, that's great. Thank you very much for this. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome. You good?
Yeah. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation honoring Big G Auto Service on the occasion of its twentieth anniversary. Councilmember Luther, please come forward. She will read the proclamation.
Just one minute.
Come forward.
A proclamation honoring Big G Auto Service on the occasion of its twentieth anniversary. Whereas, Big G Auto Service opened its doors on August fifteenth, two thousand five, in the city of Bridston, Missouri, a community offering opportunity and connection located at one-two-four-zero-one Natural Bridge Road, Bridston, Missouri, in St. Louis County. And whereas, Big G Auto Service was founded to provide a trusted alternative to high-cost, low-quality auto repair services by delivering dependable service, creating the kind of repair experience customers deserve. And whereas, Big G Auto Service is committed to quality by using the best materials available and standing behind every job with a twenty-four month or twenty-four thousand mile guarantee on all labor. And whereas, the passion of owner Jeff Dugopolsky for automobiles began at a young age, inspired by his family's deep automotive legacy, including his great-grandfather, Joseph Prystelski, did I get that right? An immigrant who worked on the Model T assembly line for Henry Ford. And his great-uncles, Stan and Ed, who owned and operated a Chrysler dealership in the nineteen sixties that later became Pristel Pontiac GMC in Menominee, Michigan. And whereas, following his graduation from high school, Jeff pursued formal training in automotive maintenance technology at Rankin Technical College, equipping him with the knowledge to succeed in the automotive field. And whereas, Jeff went on to work at gas stations, Landmark Chrysler Plymouth Jeep, and several Dodge dealerships, earning the distinction of Chrysler Gold Technician, while recognizing the opportunity to improve the customer service and repair experience within the industry. And whereas, with determination and vision, Jeff launched Big G Auto Service by transforming two former service stations on Natural Bridge Road into trusted facilities dedicated to customer service and excellence. And whereas, for the past twenty years, Big G Auto Service has consistently upheld its mission to provide honest, high-quality automotive repairs, earning the respect and trust of its customers and the wider community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Bridston hereby congratulates Big G Auto Service on its twentieth anniversary, Jeff Dugopolsky, for his vision and leadership, entrepreneurial spirit, and dedication to the community, and extends best wishes for continued success and prosperity in the years ahead. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I didn't know if wife and daughter wanted to get in a photo.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on up. I'll, I'll move over.
All right. Jeffrey, would you like to say some words?
I'm not much of a word guy, but, uh, thank you for this, and it's been, I'm not really from Bridston, but I, I've come here more than I'm at home, I think. So, I really like Bridston. I feel like it's my home. So, thank you, everybody, and thanks for bringing your broken cars to me.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have a liquor license consideration, new liquor license for barrel blends. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of liquor license for barrel blends.
Second.
Motion is made for first reading for a new liquor license by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther for barrel blends. Continue?
New liquor license for barrel blends. This is original package with Sunday sales original packaging and wine tastings. Move to table the liquor license consideration for barrel blends.
Second.
Motion, motion is made to table the liquor license for barrel blends. Motion made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Next item on the agenda, consideration of new bills. Bill number sixty-five fourteen. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill sixty-five fourteen.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther for first consideration of bill number sixty-five fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridston, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here too, with Tony Prince Company, Inc., for the council chamber's carpet replacement in an amount of nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars and zero cents. The project budget includes contingency in the amount of four thousand dollars and zero cents. Move to table bill sixty-five fourteen.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther to table bill number sixty-five fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill number sixty-five fourteen is tabled. Next item on the agenda, the attorneys report. Thank you, Mr. Tollis. Council Communications. I didn't forget you this week. I'll start with Councilmember Hood.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish Mary happy travels going to Washington, DC and presenting that.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Good evening. I just wanted a little brag thing. Attended the coffee with cops on October the third at Starbucks at Target. It's great seeing neighbors come in and meet the police and the council. October the seventh, we had a pretty busy day. Attended a pension trustee seminar, attended the night out at the chairman of the Police Commission, reported at design and review. We will be seeing a variance on O'Reilly Auto Zone sign at probably the next council meeting. And also, we approved many dumpster enclosures. Thank you very much, Zach. And Ward Four meeting, October the eighth, report from the Police Department, and thank you, Mayor, Mayor Heine, for our city report. Attended the clergy lunch on October the ninth, organized by councilperson Gretchen Luke. It's a nice greeting and sharing of news with our spiritual members of our city. Attended the economic development last night. I do need to ask if anyone could tell me if anything's going on with the India Bazaar. You know, they started, and we sure would like them to come back to or start in Bridston. And I do have a question. I, what is the process? Don't have to give me an answer tonight. What is the process for updating a Bridston ordinance? Do we go to the department head? Do we go to the city administrator? I just have a issue, and I would like to have some study on residential home businesses. And then tomorrow, or Friday, I'm sorry, October the seventeenth, I know I'm giving the news from you, Mr. Kane, I'm sorry, Gentry Park Playground dedication at ten AM, Mayor Terry Briggs Playground. I'm going to thank everyone who made this possible. I still miss my friend. Have a safe and happy Halloween.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of things. An update on the community Thanksgiving lunch that will happen on Thanksgiving from eleven to one at the Gateway Church of the Nazarene on Old St. Charles. I should have the flyer tomorrow to be able to send out to everyone. Again, they're looking for not only donations, but also cash donations, like donations of food, cash donations, and volunteers to help with the preparation. I'm also going to find out who a check can be made out to if someone prefers to give cash in check form. I'll find that out. Let's see, what else? National Night Out went very well for Ward Three for Magellan Lockport. Thank you to all who helped prepare for it and all who attended. We had another good turnout like last year. I believe we had more kids this year, though, so that was really good. I think it's all about the kids. And the fire truck came early, so they got a chance to, to see that. I did get a chance to meet with city clerk Bridget Waters yesterday, and we had a very good discussion. One topic was her suggestions of some improvements that council can consider. She's already emailed some of the info. It's in your, your email, so go ahead and look for it, about tabling versus continue versus postponing. That's not something we've ever talked about before. She sent out some, some cheat sheets, Roberts, Roberts Rules Simplified, Sunshine Law, and about council meetings. She's looking through our council rules to identify additional suggestions. She's also working on making the updates that came out of the council rules subcommittee. So far, she had not been able to find a digital copy, so she's having to recreate the entire document. having to recreate the entire document. Uh, let's see. She's also looking into software for our tablets. Getting the hardware, the tablets themselves will be easy. It's the software itself that's going to take a little investigation, so she's working on that. Let's see. Um, two, just two other things. A question. So, some of us were able to attend the in-person pension training, and some of us were not able to, so I'm still waiting for a date for when the online training will happen. Uh, I want to make sure I get that on the calendar, and the rest of us who need to take it, don't miss it. And then finally, uh, Councilmember Luther, and my Ward Three meeting is next Wednesday, Wednesday, October 22nd, at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. And I will be baking again.
Thank you. Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, thank you to everyone who's here and joining us online. And I also want to recognize staff, those that are here tonight and those that aren't, for their hard work in keeping the city the beautiful city that it is. So thank you. Please extend my thanks to those that are not here tonight. I want to congratulate all the proclamation honorees. I guess that's a word, right? Honorees, uh, wonderful. Thank you very much for all that you do, not only for the city, but beyond. It's really beyond the city. And you bring bright recognition to us. So thank you very much for all that you do. The, uh, we had a very good business and community partnership subcommittee meeting under the very capable leadership of colleague Stephen Wessie. So we've got some things coming forward that I think will, will engage our businesses and reflect the community that we can be proud of in terms of the business community. And I also want to thank, uh, a member of the Economic Development Action Committee, is that right?
Advisory.
Advisory Committee, uh, Tim Branicki, who joined our meeting, and we were at his meeting last night, the meeting they had. So thank you very much. Well, we've got, uh, what is that, dual engines? No, dual engines. What is it? Dual pipes, dual fuel, whatever. There's a car term for it. We've got two things going at the same time. But anyway.
Carburetor.
Yeah, that, that's right. So we've got, we've got some steam going in that direction. And then I, too, attended the coffee with the cops at Target. I go anywhere where there's coffee, so that's wonderful. Attended the pension seminar, which is a requirement for all the council sitting up here today. The, I'm very sorry to hear the, the situation on Brookington. I'm, was not aware of that. I believe very strongly that code enforcement is... I was not aware of that. And I would like to let you know that code enforcement, I think, is the heart of the stability and growth of Bridgeton, not just for the residential community, but also for the, for the business community as well. The Ward Three meeting we just talked about is a week from now, and I look forward to our budget meetings over the next month.
Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, congratulations, Ms. Mary, on the proclamation. And yes, as she put said, um, safe travels to DC. Also, Mr. Moenig? Is that, am I pronouncing that correctly? Yes, I also have never, uh, heard about this. So I, if you could stick around after the meeting, I'd just like to ask you a few questions. You can do that. Okay, thank you. Um, other than that, I also, we also had National Night Out in our subdivision. I also made it to most of everybody's National Night Out, I think, except for one. And that was a real nice turnout at all of the events. So, um, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ewan.
Well, I just echo the sentiments of my fellow council members, and, uh, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Sattell.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, National Night Out was a pretty nice evening. Uh, I attended three different ones. Uh, one in Ward One, and one, I guess, went over in Ward Two, and one in Ward Three. Um, it was, what was really nice about it is that, is people that got together, some of the neighbors only see each other maybe once a year, yet they brought food out, shared the food they had. Uh, a couple of them had hot dogs at different places like that. So I thought that was really nice. Uh, as I came back home, I did notice that the, the signs were, were all lit up on the Rock Road, that we were worried about some of our street signs that we just, you know, hired on the Rock Road to light up. They were all lit up that night. So hey, then you, when you, when you're riding the gator, you can take a look and see everything pretty, pretty visually. Also want to congratulate the Big G, or I know I take my vehicles there, and it's not just for like some of us elected officials, but I know a lot of citizens in the city of Bridgeton use your, your business there quite a bit, you know. Now, was referred to you even by another citizen of Bridgeton, you know. And I live on the other side, next to Maryland Heights. All right, but, yeah, appreciate that, though. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Wessie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Thanks for watching, if you're watching on YouTube. Um, just a heads up, on the 24th, you are going to see city council, AKA me, completely annihilate parks and the fire department. And the police were, uh, so worried about going against us with the Chili Cook Off, they're not even going to show, it sounds like. So, uh, you know, it's, um, you're just going to see city council win. So, uh, on October 24th, at the Community Center. And, uh, also, uh, last week, we had the beautification, uh, voting, um, going on. So that was really kind of fun to ride around the van with everybody and voting on Halloween decorations. And, uh, how nice some of the houses look here in Bridgeton. We have a couple places out there that, um, look very great. And, uh, to Big G, also congratulations on this, but I hear that, uh, the car did great on Drag Week. So, uh, you and, uh, you and Jeff Hahn, it sounds like, had a lot of fun. So, uh, congratulations on that. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. By the way, I'm on the administration team for Chili Cook Off.
Bring it.
Staff, I'll start with, uh, Police Chief Mark Masadi.
Good evening. Just a couple of events. Uh, just a reminder that the prescription drug takeback day is on the 25th, out on the Government Center parking lot, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, the electronic recycling drop-off and the shredding event will run simultaneously. Um, when you're done dropping off that stuff, go down to tons of trucks. I know that's going to be the same day. Um, we are participating in the Chili Cook Off. I don't know where that rumor got, that somebody's trying to wipe us out.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
I thought it said that you guys weren't going to be in it this year.
Yeah, since the beginning. Well, we're still here.
Nice.
So also, there's a craze training for the public on, uh, November the 4th. That's six to seven, an hour long, here at the Government Center. Uh, that's the active shooter training for the public. So, uh, uh, pass the word, uh, increase attendance on that. I just wanted to thank all the council members and mayor, uh, for the support on National Night Out. We did have seven different block parties. All of them had a significant turnout. It was really impressive. We were glad to see that kind of support. Um, it is all about building stronger relationships between the local residents and the police department, and, uh, bringing awareness to solving crime. Doing that is by neighbors getting out and meeting each other. So, uh, we were extremely impressed with that. And I know you all pulled, played a big part in getting the word out, and not only doing that, but showing up to the, that event. So I really appreciate that, that support. Uh, one last thing, um, I wanted to announce the retirement of Captain Dennis Fitzgerald. Um, Denny's retiring on the 31st of this month. Um, Denny started the Police Department on January 9th, 1981. So, uh, just right at 45 years of service with the Police Department. Uh, he'll be sorely missed, uh, but we really wish him well in his retirement, uh, as he moves into the next phase of his life. But I wanted to let the council know that. So, thank you.
Any questions with the chief counsel? I see none. Parks and Rec Director Brendan Kane.
Uh, yeah, as it was mentioned, the Gentry Park ribbon cutting is this Friday at 10:00 AM. So we're really excited about that. Um, the Chili Cook Off, uh, I believe there's an unwritten rule that until you have a change, a championship under your belt, keep the, um, trash talk probably to a minimum. So, um, Saturday, October 25th, we have the tons of trucks at BMAC. That's always a fun event for the kids. Uh, and then finally, we were, notified today that we will be awarded the next grant round for Hellbush Park. So, um, yeah. Kind of a surprise, but, uh, we, we will, we will take it. So, uh, we're excited about moving forward with that, and more information to come.
Councilmember Wessie has a question.
Uh, actually, just want to make a comment real quick, Mayor. Um, Mr. Kane, uh, isn't making as big a deal about that grant as he probably should. Um, how many, how many years in a row is it now that we've got this?
I think that's, that'll be four.
And in your, can you think of any other, I, how common is that to see? I know it's very, well, I'll let you take that. I mean, this is a huge, huge achievement for you and your team. So I just wanted to make sure everybody realized that.
It's common for the bigger cities because you get scored based on your, uh, like how many grants you've had and your, um, per capita inventory. And Bridgeton has a huge park inventory for a city of our size. So, uh, it's a lot more difficult for us than it is for some of the bigger cities. So we're, we're happy about it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Mr. Gunn, Public Works Director.
It's hard to believe, but we're going to have snow in the near future, probably. I mean, we're getting ready right now. Our salt dome is completely full, so I'm hoping because of that. We don't have any this winter, um, but we do have a full salt dome. Uh, Matt's been working with, uh, Cargile Salt the last two weeks, so we're ready to go this, uh, winter. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Bookout, City Administrator.
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I guess it's my turn. Yeah, congratulations, uh, Jeff, on 20 years. Appreciate you, uh, bringing your business to Bridgeton and keeping it here. I know you've made a lot of friends with the Bridgeton residents, and, um, appreciate all you do for the community also. I know you, uh, donate to our Board and Commissions Dinner, um, uh, oil change, things like that. So we appreciate all you do. And, uh, Mrs. Schultz, I'm glad that we could, uh, support you and your medical condition and issues with the proclamation. And, uh, going forward, we do, uh, keep you in our thoughts, and we also pray for you. I know that. Thank you. Um, so, council, um, I want to let you know that, um, the, the city attorney and Mr. Tallis are, and Robert Gunn are continuing to work on our ordinance so that we can get back to exterior home inspections. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can get that wrapped up and, uh, get it, uh, to council for approval. I, too, attended coffee with a cop on the 3rd at the Starbucks in Target. What a nice event. Um, I think it was bigger than the Taylor Swift album being introduced, at least here in, in, uh, the Target in Bridgeton. I heard Kansas City had lines over there. I think, uh, the chief hasn't mentioned this, but I believe there's going to be a breakfast with badges coming up soon, and, uh, he'll probably put out more information when that is available. Uh, that's the police departments and the fire departments, uh, that, uh, meet at a local restaurant here in Bridgeton and, uh, and have breakfast and, and, and share, uh, time with residents. So looking forward to that happening again. I wanted to let you know that, uh, Mr. Book and, Bookout and I met with the department heads last week regarding the 2026 budgets that they have proposed. Uh, things are looking good. Um, our finance officer thinks that we're on track, uh, with our 2020, 25 budget as far as revenue projections and also our expenses. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that as well. Um, I attended the staff meeting last Friday. We have a staff meeting every Friday before the, uh, council meeting. Uh, senior luncheon I attended along with Chief Masadi. He also speaks to the seniors at the senior luncheon. Uh, we had the Economic Development Advisory Commission meeting last night. Um, their next meeting, they're going to take a look at, um, where additional signage, um, welcoming people to Bridgeton can be placed throughout the city. Uh, that's on their to-do list. Um, they're pretty much, uh, finished with their first six to 12 months of accomplishments that they, um, were geared toward. Now they're working on the, uh, 12-month to, uh, uh, 18-month segment of their, of their assignments. So that's going along well. I'm still pleased with the commission, and, um, they keep things moving forward. I want to let you know that the, um, go-live date for Lama, that's our, uh, business license and permit software, we're being told is October 27th. So hopefully, Public Works and the Finance Office, uh, with the, uh, business licenses, uh, will see an improvement in time and efficiency, uh, once this is all, gone live. Um, I, too, want to compliment, uh, Captain Fitzgerald on 45 years. And as I've told people before, I've been asked what the hardest part of my job is, and I always say it's, um, personnel issues. And, um, when I say personnel issues, it, it, the biggest area is retirement, especially with people with that, that kind of service, 45 years to the Police Department. There's a learning curve when you bring in new individuals. So, um, you know, it, it takes a while to get back up to speed. But be patient, uh, we'll always be there for you. And, uh, appreciate everybody being here. That's all I have. I'm going to ask for a motion for adjournment, unless you want to talk about the budget sessions.
Yes, budget date.
Okay. So as of right now, we're looking at November the 12th for the first one at 6:00 PM. That's a Wednesday. And then Tuesday, November the 18th at 6:00 PM. Is that good with everybody?
Would you be able to say those one more time? I was pulling my calendar, I'm sorry.
It's Wednesday, November the 12th, and Tuesday, November the 18th.
Works for me, sir.
Both will be at 6:00 PM. Okay. That's all I have. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion's made by Councilmember Hood, seconded by Councilmember Patel, for adjourning the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. We're adjourned. Thank you.